So we call to order for this Calistoga Unified School District meeting. Item 940, have you been on the agenda? Now, I believe it can motion to reconvene for conference meeting. On those favor? Thank you. Okay, I would like to say that there is no report of actions taken in this session. Next item on the here that is a technical call. Let's pass you.
Here.
Trusty Diorio?
Here.
Trusty Han?
Here.
From President of this year? Now if we can come, you can join me to honor our back.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under a, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item 940, have you been on the agenda? Well, thank you very much.
All right.
You know you go? Thank you. Item 940, the distribution statement. We are a collaborative, culturally rich educational community where our rigorous and innovative curriculum prepares our students to be successful contributors to our global success. The next item is public comments. I can take one one. Public comments from the floor, and this is on no agenda items.
Is there a way you can turn the microphone up? We have a hard time hearing people. Thank you.
Put it closer to you. Put it closer to you.
Bring it closer? Thank you. This portion of the agenda allows an individual the opportunity to address the board on any item regarding more business that is not on the agenda. Without taking action or entering into a dialogue with the public, board members might briefly respond to statements made or ask clarifying questions about topics posed by the public. Your matter might be referred to administration. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. And before we go into, I invite the public to the, to make any comments. I would like to take the opportunity to express my heartfelt thank you to all the Calistoga Unified School District employees who joined the efforts to assist our neighbors from Lake County in the darkest moment in the system. From the first night of the evacuation, Dr. Dr. Monstragon and the board kept close communication about the possibility of opening our facilities for sheltering or helping with the meal preparations for the evacuees. I would like specifically to increase watch and head work for their, for their tireless efforts and flexibility during this very stressful time. Thank you to the administrators that were at the fairgrounds early in Sunday morning, providing these assistance. I will never forget Principal Kumamoto's picture posted on Facebook directing traffic at the fairgrounds entrance. And very importantly, I would like to thank the Calistoga Unified School District's parents and all the students in their important role that they play in the relief efforts. The Athletic Boosters Club, with Ela parents and many, many more, that were there offering a helping hand. My grandmother Mary used to say, "It is in the most tragic of circumstances that the best, I, or the worst of people comes to life." Fortunately, in Calistoga, the very best of the community came to life, and this life showed over the fairgrounds for more than two very difficult weeks. Thank you all, thank you Calistoga. And now, I would like to invite the public to public comments. And I have to say one more thing, that this public comment session is going to be translated. So we have a professional translator here who's going to be helping us. Thank you.
Do you like to translate?
Yes.
Se le invita ahora el público que quiera hacer comentarios, el micrófono está abierto para cualquier pregunta.
Hello. When I first moved to Calistoga in the summer of 2014, I heard great things about our elementary school. That our school was a blue ribbon school with top-notch, hard-working, dedicated teachers. So you can imagine my surprise to read in the paper that 92% of our teachers had no confidence in our principal. I had not seen this coming. As unfortunate as the article was for the reputation of our school and our principal, it was clear to me that the teachers felt like they were not being heard at the district office. So they went to the press. My next thought was, how could 92% of top-notch, dedicated, hard-working teachers be completely wrong in their assessment of their principal? My concern only grew when the response from our school board and superintendent was no action needed. That school business was to proceed as usual, as if there wasn't a giant elephant in the room. As a volunteer parent, it quickly became clear to me that the no-confidence vote was not going to disappear, and while my daughter's classroom pummed along, the teacher's frustration, low morale, and concern for the school as a whole was palpable. Sadly, things have continued to deteriorate. While we can all be happy that our vice principal got a new job opportunity, my expectation would be that a person in such an important school position would provide more than one week notice. Her quick departure certainly gives the impression she wanted out fast. Not a move people generally make if they're satisfied in their working environment. Our situation looks bad. Teacher's vote, no confidence, vice principal leaving one week notice, and our current principal on personal leave with no date of return. Just one of these matters poses a real problem, let alone all three occurring simultaneously. I am here tonight because I want to know what the plan is. I want to hear from our school leadership about the current dysfunction and confusion at our school and what is being done to get matters resolved. To learn about major school administrative changes while they are taking place in real time makes me feel like things are out of control. Also, I have questions. I want to know if our principal can be gone for as long as she needs or if there's a limit on personal leave. I want to know if Jane Bunty will act as principal for as long as Yamas may be gone. I want to know if the board and superintendent are making plans for when Yamas returns to restore trust and confidence between teachers and administration. I want to know if the board and superintendent are making plans should Yamas not return. I want to know who will be filling the shoes of our vice principal since today was her last day. I have so many questions and I have heard nothing from our leadership, which does not instill any sense of confidence or that there's an essence of urgency. School administrators could very well be working on matters behind the scene, but if stakeholders don't hear anything, how are we to know? To me, the most unfortunate part in all of this is I wish we could be focusing on our new Common Core curriculum. How to get more teacher aides in the classroom? Programs for kids that are not reaching grade level expectations? Programs for kids that are selling those expectations? A science fair, drama clubs? The good stuff, the cool stuff, the fun stuff? I hear people say, "Well, my kid is getting an education and goes to a safe school. It's not that bad." I don't want the bar to be set at that bad. I want the bar to be continually raised to give all of our kids the best school environment and learning opportunity we can give them. I feel like I can only be part of the solution if our leadership is open and forthcoming with what the problems are and the steps to start resolving them. By the next board meeting, I am hopeful that there will be some answers to the many questions we have and an action plan in place. Thank you for your time.
92% de los malhechos, ¿cómo es posible que no tengan confianza en nuestra, nuestra directora? No acción sean, la respuesta fue de que no se necesitaba ninguna acción y el voto de no confianza ha sido obvio, las cosas continúan yendo hacia abajo. El hecho de que la directora se fue de un, de repente fue, dejó preguntas. Estoy aquí para saber, hacerte de la falta de confianza que existe en la escuela. Quiero saber si la directora va a regresar y cuándo. Quiero saber quién va a tomar su lugar, si la subdirectora estará tomando su lugar. Y así muchas preguntas que surgen y que no tenemos ninguna respuesta de nuestros líderes. Lo más importante para mí es que nos enfoquemos en la educación de nuestros hijos. La gente a veces dice por ahí que mis hijos están bien, están aprendiendo, todo está bien, pero yo quiero saber cuál es y quiero ser parte de la solución. Espero que la próxima junta de este, de los líderes que aquí están presentes de la junta haya alguna respuesta.
Hello, my name is Michelle and I have a child in the fifth grade and another child that will be joining kindergarten next year. As a parent, it has been nice to see the monthly Reach Best Award assemblies and the picture slideshows. I'm glad that when Ms. Lamas started here two years ago, she kept the monthly Cock and Conversations meetings that the previous principal had started. But over the last year, parents would ask questions and would be given the runaround. Take for example, the school website. There is still not enough data website available for the school, and instead, there are several versions with inaccurate information. It would be helpful to have one place to go for school information such as teacher and administration contact details, school schedules, policies, board meeting minutes, etc. Another issue that has been a topic of discussion at the Cock and Conversation is pesticides. I have always filled out that form to be notified when the school would be sprayed. I have never been notified since 2010. I did receive the most recent notice that the school would be going to organic sprays. But when I questioned it at the meeting, I was told by Ms. Monstragon that because they were going to organic sprays, we as parents didn't have to be notified. I've researched what organic pesticides are considered exempt, and our children have had adverse reactions to some of those ingredients. For example, cinnamon is one of those ingredients. When our son was young, he ate something with cinnamon and broke out into a rash. It concerns me to not know when and what is being applied at the school. And while the school may not legally be required to inform parents because these are exempt, the right thing to do would be to provide clear and complete information just in case there may be a difficulty or allergy to one of the ingredients. It's the right thing to do. After the last school board meeting, one of the local newspapers printed that Ms. Lamas never came to my child's IEP meeting. When I saw that, I knew my child does not have an IEP, nor does my child have a final form. I was called into Ms. Lamas's office where she confronted me about this detail. A confrontation that did not need to happen. She told me she had to pull my child's record to see for herself. I find it very sad that Ms. Lamas doesn't know what is going on with my child. I have also heard that she doesn't meet with the teachers to go over how each kid is doing in the class, whereas the previous principal did. CES is a small school. Calistoga is a small town, and the school needs a small-town personal approach. What are your intentions with this school, with the changes in administration? All we as parents have seen is an announcement that Ms. Bunty is now the acting principal, and we've seen a newspaper article stating that Ms. Mannix is resigning. There has been no formal notice about Ms. Lamas, so we are left wondering about the future of her and of the schools.
Excuse me. I am really sorry, but you three minutes are up. We'd be happy to, to you, to get a notification or to have a letter from you. That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
La señora Michelle habla de, como madre de familia, de gusto saber cuando la señorita Yamas llegó a ser la líder de la escuela primaria de Calistoga. Ella dio ejemplos también que después de un tiempo notó que no había seguimiento en algunos asuntos. Asuntos como el sistema de pesticidas. Los pesticidas orgánicos en lugar de los pesticidas que actualmente se están usando. Preguntas en los, en cuanto a algunos asuntos que se necesitaban tomar acción. Por ejemplo, el hijo de ellos es alérgico, reaccionó a la canela, que es algo que puede ocasionar, según ella, ciertas reacciones alérgicas. Ella dice, necesitamos más información, cómo se puede utilizar. Necesitamos más información. En un reporte de un periódico, se reportó de que la señorita Yamas no venía a las juntas. La señorita Yamas se reunió conmigo, pero no pudimos, ella no tenía información acerca, o récord, o información detallada acerca de mi hijo y alguna evaluación con respecto a él. La escuela primaria es pequeña, sabemos que todos los padres nos conocemos y no, hasta este punto no sabemos cuál fue la razón porque de tan súbitamente se fue la señorita Yamas y se iba a regresar y cuál es el plan.
Hi, my name is Ellie Glendo. I have three students in Calistoga's school, there's two of which write the elementary school. And I'm here tonight to talk to you about how very disappointed I am about the situation with the administration of the elementary school. I know that Ms. Ramon has already expressed her feelings about it and I do have some feelings in common with her, but some of the things that I feel I have kind of a different angle on things. Specifically, I'm disappointed in the lack of communication and action by the district and the school board in this matter. It seems to me that by taking the stand of nothing needs to be done, a situation which began with an inexperienced principal and discord among coworkers was allowed to degenerate into what looks like, from the outside, utter chaos and left our elementary school campus in a heap. In the wake of that chaos, it also seems to me, from the outside looking in, that that elementary community was also left divided on sort of party lines between this side or that side, for or against. How do you feel about this situation? I myself, after talking with teachers and other parents to find out what I could about what was going on, have been told to be careful by more than one person about who I align myself with or who I am seen talking to. And that seems to me like it's an environment that has gone way too far. At this time, I feel that you collectively should no longer remain silent or inactive. There are a lot of hard feelings for parents who really like Ms. Yamas. And even though her absence is officially personal leave, many believe that she will not be returning as a result of the no-confidence vote and the ensuing hostilities. There is also some resentment for teachers who were the most vocal in their displeasure, even though those teachers were speaking out for what they truly believed was right. I have spoken to quite a few people about this issue over the last few months. And for those of you that don't know me, I am fluent in Spanish and so these conversations are the Spanish speakers and English speakers' like. And what I found is that parents and teachers are both feeling like they are not valued or considered enough to even more a statement for me to help us all understand what's going on in our schools. We do hear rumors. We hear accusations of bullying and name-calling and things that are beneath us or should be. And it comes from all sides. Our elementary campus community needs to be healed and reunited if we ever hope to have administrators who want to work there. That cannot be accomplished if something does not change. Like I said, I've been speaking with a lot of parents and what I have found is that rich or poor, brown or white, English or Spanish, educated or not, we all want what's best for our children. And most of us want what's best for everyone's children. I believe a unified school community with open lines of communication is best for everyone's children. And I would like to really see all of you leading the way toward that healing. Give everyone an example to follow. Come spend some time on campus, see what's going on there. And then let's sit down and come up with strategies to make it better. Because I for one will certainly be there to help you. Thank you.
Quiero expresar mi, mi desmayo acerca de la situación de nuestra escuela primaria. La falta de comunicación, el hecho de que no se ha tomado una posición y que se ha hecho en cierta manera nada acerca de la directora que ahora ya no está. Viendo la comunidad de esta escuela, veo que hay dos grupos. Un grupo de gente que me dice, ten cuidado, otros que me dicen, fíjate con quién platicas, con quién andas. Este tipo de ambiente ha llegado a su límite. El hecho de que no se ha tomado acción, que los padres y los maestros no reciben el valor, la apreciación necesaria para saber también qué está sucediendo en esta escuela. Hay comentarios que duelen y necesitamos cambiar. La diversidad de los colores de todas las razas, de las personas individualmente. Queremos ver que haya diversidad y que veamos que esto es lo mejor para todos nuestros hijos, no nada más para unos. También queremos preguntarles a ustedes como la mesa directiva, que nos den el ejemplo y que nos ayuden a encontrar respuestas.
A little girl gave me a note in English that she wants me to translate into Spanish and then, would you like to read it in English yourself? No? Okay, would you like me to read it for you? So I'm going to read it first in English and then I will do the translation. "I love you. You are the best principal. You are so kind to the school. The school needs you to stay. We need the school. The school needs you to help. And we, we need you to help, to love and to have fun. You are the best principal. I love you very much, Mrs. Yamas. From Vanessa..."
Cassandra.
"...from Cassandra to Mrs. Yamas."
Un cuento pequeño para la niña Cassandra. La quiero mucho. Usted ha sido la mejor directora. Es tan noble y la necesitamos. Queremos que se quede. Necesitamos su amor y también divertir, tener, tener fan, divertirnos. Usted es la mejor directora. La quiero mucho, señora Yamas. De Cassandra a la señora Yamas.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Tal and I have two kids actually. One has moved from kindergarten to first grade this year because of the staff at CED. And also, I have a fifth grader. And I do work part-time for the most, so I'm very involved in the school. And my concern has always been kids. I don't want this to affect the kids. And when my fifth grader comes home, last week he was like, "Mom, Ms. Yamas hasn't been there all week. I heard she's not coming back. What's going on?" That's my concern, right there. I want to know what's going to happen and how we're going to rectify this for them too, to make them feel secure and safe and know that they have a place to learn and have fun. We teach our kids to be respectful, safe and responsible. So we need to do that too. And I want to know how we're going to follow that.
Estoy abreviando estos comentarios de una manera donde exprese los sentimientos que están haciendo los que hablan. La señora dice, tengo un niño en el quinto grado y estoy más o menos involucrada en escuela o con escuela. Cuando un niño dice, "Mamá, la señora Yamas no ha estado allí por una semana y no sabemos si va a regresar." ¿Qué les estamos enseñando a nuestros hijos? Yo les pregunto a ustedes, necesitamos respuestas.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Olson, elementary school teacher. I've had many of your students in my class. I'd like to bring something to you. A desperate mission statement, I haven't heard that yet. "We are a collaborative, culturally rich educational community where rigorous and innovative curriculum prepares our students to be successful contributors to our global society." I'm not here to talk about Principal Yamas, I'm here to talk about our students. That's what we're in the business for. It's been five years for us to drive to get to the exit program, to exit the program approval, become a distinguished school, and then a national blue ribbon school. Hard work, dedicated teachers, support staff, aides, student programs, all achieved that goal. CES achieved it. Yay us. Yay everybody. But now, although, we're crumbling apart. A disaster in the making. We have less aid time, programs are dropped, we have Common Core and LCAP looming, we have no reading curriculum, no intervention, no newcomers class, no reading resource, we have reduced aids in special ed where we need it the most, no support for struggling students. We do have, however, lots of administrators and executive assistants. Many of my fifth graders are two to three years behind in their reading ability and there's no reading resource teacher. They can't read the word problems, let alone do the arithmetic. Our students are struggling with math concepts and desperately need intervention, but we do not have an intervention teacher. We were told there was no money for a reading resource teacher, but there was enough money for two executive administrator positions. There seems to be plenty of money for more administrators, but not enough money for our students' names. It sure seems that money is being cut from our students and spent more and more on administrators. District offices indeed doubled in size in just five years, while support aides and resource programs have been cut or reduced. But wait, there's more. Speaking of the kids, I want to get a little bit in. Safety of our students. Has anybody looked at the bike rack at the elementary school? It's bent, it's twisted, it's rusted, the pavement is uneven. Somebody is going to seriously get hurt. The district office has a brand-new parking lot. The tetherball area, just repatched and remodeled after the remodel. It has three different surfaces, splotchy asphalt, faded lines. District office had a nice new walkway. And lastly, has anybody been in the elementary school bathroom? Torn, mildew, old wire, toilets without a seat cover, mold growing on the base of the fixture. This is what teachers have to get used to with distinguished visitors like Dr. Nemco.
Señor Olson.
Thank you. Gracias.
Voy a traducir lo que el maestro acaba de expresar directamente de su escrito. El año pasado, los maestros de la escuela primaria de Calistoga votaron un 92% de no, de que no tenían confianza en su directora. El año empezó con las cosas básicamente igual, tensiones estaban altas y las decisiones pobres o malas decisiones abundaron. En esa semana así empezamos. Las tensiones parecían que estaban amanorando y el progreso se veía. Y hemos tenido una jornada larga. Hemos visto sentimientos positivos, hemos recibido el listón azul y hemos recibido reconocimiento por ser una escuela distinguida, que fue lo que ganó la escuela primaria de Calistoga. Este ha sido y fue un gran comienzo y espero que esto pueda continuar. Estamos en una colaborativa, en una comunidad educativa, cultural, rica en cultura, donde todo lo de la educación es innovativa y es rigorosa y estamos preparando a nuestros estudiantes a ser contribuyentes exitosos a una sociedad global. Han sido cinco años y más que el programa de salida ha mejorado. Hemos visto también que la escuela se ha distinguido y también que ha recibido el listón azul. El trabajo de los maestros que trabajaron duro. El apoyo del personal y los programas de estudiantes también recibieron o pudieron ayudar a lograr esta meta. Ahora la escuela primaria lo ha logrado, pero hemos también visto que la escuela está cayéndose o desintegrándose. Un desastre se ve a punto de suceder. Tenemos menos tiempo de los que ayudan en los salones, los programas algunos han sido quitados. La educación común que es educación principal está también sufriendo. No tenemos un currículo o un plan para lectura o también intervención, no hay nuevos... Y voy a traducir esto de una manera literal, no hay nuevos en la clase, no hay recursos para lectura, no tenemos asistentes en la escuela de educación especial y no hay apoyo para nuestros estudiantes que están apenas o que están sufriendo tratando de lograr algo. Entonces, pero sí estamos viendo que hay administradores y asistentes ejecutivos. Muchos de mis estudiantes del quinto grado están entre los dos y tres años atrás en su habilidad para leer y no hay recursos o maestro que pueda ayudarles. Ellos no pueden leer y no pueden entender los problemas de palabras o con palabras de manera escrita y menos cuando se trata de la aritmética o matemáticas. Nuestros estudiantes están sufriendo con los conceptos de matemáticas y desesperadamente necesitan intervención, pero no tenemos un maestro que pueda ayudar en ese aspecto. Se los dijo que no hay dinero para un maestro de recursos, pero sí hay suficiente dinero para mis posiciones administrativas. Parece ver que hay suficiente dinero para los administradores, pero no suficiente para los estudiantes, las necesidades de los estudiantes. Parece ser que el dinero se está cortando de nuestros estudiantes y se está gastando más en los administradores. El distrito, la oficina del distrito ha doblado en su número y en cinco años mientras que el apoyo para asistentes en los salones y los programas han sido recortados o reducidos.
Hola, soy Jackie Lang y aunque no tengo ningún personal de estudiantes en la escuela ahora, he tenido cientos de ellos, muchos y muchos de tus hijos y muchos de tus hijos. Durante 37 años que estaba en el distrito escolar y todavía estoy trabajando allí, una vez en un rato soy voluntaria. De todos modos, quiero reiterar algunas cosas, especialmente lo que dijo la tía López antes. Simplemente experimentamos una de las peores tragedias de nuestra comunidad y aunque estaba en la comunidad de por encima, era todavía nuestra comunidad. Y lo increíble de eso, fue la peor de las razones, pero fue realmente la mejor de Calistoga. Y estar allí, ni siquiera puedo decir a las personas que vi allí, nuestro personal escolar, nuestros maestros, nuestros padres, teníamos auxiliares que venían de Santa Rosa de antes y después de la escuela trabajando. El edificio fue increíble. Y la familia López, todos los suministros y donaciones, y Ellie y Jennifer en la cocina de otros. Fue simplemente increíble. Era Calistoga juntándose para todos en Calistoga. Y eso es lo que nuestro distrito escolar necesita hacer ahora mismo. Han habido muchas preocupaciones. Debido a ser distrito escolar, tenemos cambios, pero nuestra pequeñez es lo que nos da beneficios únicos. Un beneficio importante es conocerse mutuamente. Individualmente tenemos tantas cosas en esta ciudad que ayudan a nuestra escuela. Pero somos todos partes interesadas, somos fortunados de tener nuestro apoyo, somos todos partes interesadas y necesitamos tener algunas respuestas y algunas preocupaciones. Y todos sabemos que han habido muchas preocupaciones con el voto de no confianza que ocurrió en junio. Lo que nunca he visto en 37 años con el distrito escolar. La directora nunca ha servido como directora escolar, tenía una experiencia de enseñanza limitada, ni siquiera se aplicó para ser directora primaria. Se aplicó a la escuela secundaria y primaria. Comenzó en una nueva escuela, una nueva ciudad, desconocida con nuestra comunidad o escuela. No conocía el programa educativo existente en nuestra escuela. Para comprender esto, había una curva de aprendizaje muy alta, todo de Common Core, proyectos basados en tecnología e integración. Su infancia no experimentada y la falta de liderazgo llevó a mayores problemas y durante dos años se han tratado de abordar de muchas maneras, individualmente, como socios, como equipo de liderazgo y finalmente a través de la unión. Las cosas continúan. Quizás la mayor fuerza de VICA ha sido, una de sus mayores fuerzas, su compromiso con desarrollar una relación positiva con nuestras familias latinos y con nuestro comité ELAC. Es muy commendable, es necesitado y es uno de los aspectos importantes de ser directora. Y desafortunadamente, incluso con ELAC, las reuniones no han sido siempre manejadas de una forma productiva o profesional. Ahora, durante varios años, antes de la llegada de la señora Yamas, todo el personal trabajó incredibly duro cuando salimos de la programación. No solo ganamos un premio, ganamos dos increíbles premios de logro. Digo "nosotros", pero realmente nuestros estudiantes, tus hijos, hicieron eso. Y todo eso ha sucedido. Ahora, un buen líder podría empoderar nuestro éxito, pero dos años después la moral escolar estaba en el nivel más bajo que he visto. Me preocupa que los maestros se preocupen por la gente con ojos cerrados. Cuando no escuchamos nada... Cuando no escuchamos nada, desafortunadamente eso se convierte en nuestra preocupación. Gracias.
Voy a tratar de ser lo más breve posible sin perder la esencia de lo que están expresando. La señora que acaba de hablar dice que ella ha tenido muchos estudiantes por casi 36 años y ahora es voluntaria de la escuela de vez en cuando y que algunos de los niños de ustedes y de todos los que están presentes quizás pasaron por su salón. Lo que ella quiere estatizar es que lo que dijo la señorita López, la presidenta del consejo. La señorita López dijo que uno de los peores desastres nos mostró lo mejor de Calistoga. Y tantas personas que salieron, eso en mi parecer es lo que el distrito es. Tenemos tanto en nuestra comunidad, todos siendo parte, porque todos tenemos opinión y todos tenemos parte, pero también surgió el voto de no confianza. La directora de la escuela primaria no tenía la experiencia necesaria y había mucho que ella necesitaba aprender, mucho. Era una curva de aprendizaje enorme para ella. Sabemos que había diferentes programas que ella tenía que encabezar. Y quiero decir que la fuerza y lo positivo de la señora Yamas, una de sus fuerzas es que ella se identificó con la comunidad latina y la comunidad latina se identificó con ella y yo sé que eso es importante. Tuvimos muchos premios, pero por los dos años pasados la moral ha bajado y está ahí.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Ana Esma, tengo un hijo de nombre Vidal Bernal. Yo he estado aquí desde que mi hijo empezó a ir de gato con unas familias hermosas que fui voluntaria con ellas, con muchas, en ese entonces, programas de lectura, muchas cosas que me encantaron. Pero estoy escuchando que ya no tiene nada de eso. Yo era voluntaria toda la hora de clase que quedaba con ellas. Pero yo siempre he dicho que una directora tiene que ir preparada, no importa que sea latina o americana. Es siempre para nuestros hijos, para mejorar la calificación. El grado cuando no vengan a la escuela secundaria esté preparado, estoy siempre nerviosa. Mi hijo estaba en especial ed, desde tercer año, ahora está muy bien arriba. Yo siempre estaba llegando en la elementaria, mi hijo necesitaba clases para llegar desde especial ed y ya no lo suficientes. Eso no está bien, necesitan ayudar a los estudiantes desde la elementaria para cuando estén en la escuela secundaria estén bien. Y nos estamos preparando. Y lo importante es tener conversación con los padres y los maestros. Y qué lástima que ya no haya eso con la directora, eso es todo, gracias.
Tengo un hijo en la escuela primaria de Calistoga. Muchos buenos maestros, algunos de ellos están aquí. Sé que una directora tiene que estar preparada. Mi hijo estaba en especial ed y sé ahora que esos programas están perdidos. Me siento sorry que ninguno de esos programas continuará ya que la directora... Y espero que puedas corregirme, pero creo que entendí que ella está sorry que ninguno de esos programas continuará sin la directora.
No, correcto.
No, no. Yo dije que si la maestra, no importa que sea latina o americana, pero tiene que ser mejor directora.
Si la directora es latina o anglo, es sobre la calidad y es sobre el trabajo.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Felicia Luján. Y la verdad, mi hija es extraña y es un poco penoso que muchos de los padres nos prestemos lo que dice, así como yo lo llamo chihuahurrero. Hay que aprender a respetar, siempre que llega una persona o una jerarquía, no estamos de acuerdo muchos porque simplemente es algo nuevo. Hay que aprender a trabajar creo que con la gente. Y hay que enseñarle a los hijos que esa persona quien haya sido no fue por voto, sino fue una disposición y creo que se tiene que respetar por lo menos el tiempo que tiene como directora o lo que sea. Porque aquí les estamos enseñando a los hijos que pueden decir, no queremos a ella. Mi hijo me dice, "Oh, yo no quería la maestra tal" o "Mi hija, yo no quería". Sin embargo, ese es el maestro que te asignaron y ese es el que tú vas a tomar. Y no lo dicen mis hijos en realidad, pero así es. Es el maestro que tenemos, es la directora y hay que aprender a trabajar por ciertos lapsos y respetar y enseñarles a los hijos que tienen que respetar jerarquías. Porque la escuela menciona este respeto y otras dos cosas más. Yo creo que es muy importante empezar a que los hijos no empiecen a hacer esto, porque a mí pasó precisamente con mi hijo que dice, tal maestra hizo esto y todos los niños nos reunimos y dijimos, "Oh, no, yo no quiero ser maestra de tal cosa porque no fue buena". Y es lo mismo que estamos haciendo aquí, porque la queremos o porque no la queremos, sino que nos estamos prestando al juego o a lo que sea, vamos, no sé. Yo creo que esto se debe de manejar como el caso, ¿no? Los problemas se arreglan entre dos y aquí ella tiene su mando y se arreglan las cosas así. No viniendo a votar o dando un voto de confianza o no confianza, yo creo que hay que tener respeto.
La última oradora mencionó el término gossip, ella se preocupa que se ha vuelto gossip. Necesitamos aprender sobre el respeto, necesitamos aprender a trabajar con personas, con personas incluso si son diferentes. Necesitamos mostrarle a nuestros hijos, necesitamos darle a la persona una oportunidad. Si ese es el maestro, la directora, si ese es el maestro que ha sido asignado, si ese es el principal que ha sido asignado, necesitamos darle el lugar y la autoridad a esa persona en la escuela. También necesitamos mostrarle a los niños cómo respetar. Los niños incluso, como mis hijos me dicen, se juntan y dicen, "No me gusta este maestro, no me gusta ese maestro". Y estamos enseñando a nuestros hijos no respetar la autoridad. Así que no se trata de un voto de confianza, se trata de respeto.
Buenas noches, de fin a fin, tres noches. Tengo viviendo tres hijos de Calistoga y anteriormente siempre miraba a la ex-principal Michelle. Todos conocíamos, pienso que el cambio que hubo de directora a muchas personas no les gustó. La verdad, yo vengo a saber por qué la cambiaron. He escuchado críticas, he escuchado que no hay ciertos programas, pero desde el tiempo que ella entró a este tiempo, los programas ya no existían tiempo atrás. Porque yo tengo un hijo que tiene problemas de ATN y entonces yo trato a mi hijo por fuera de la escuela, no tanto porque la escuela no ayude a mí. Este creo yo principalmente me gustó el cambio que hubo porque creo que cada cambio es bueno para todos, no tanto para uno como papá, sino para los niños porque vienen cosas nuevas. Creo que la profesora que estuvo anteriormente dio todo su fruto que tuvo que dar y la nueva tenía expectativas nuevas que a muchas personas no les gustaron. Al principio se siente raro, pero sin embargo tenemos que aprender aquí cada cambio es bueno tanto en casa como en la sociedad. Lo que yo vengo a ver es el por qué la sacaron, porque como dijeron muchos padres, los niños preguntaron por qué mi Yamas ya no está aquí. Para mí, el tiempo que la conocí siempre presto atención al problema que yo tuve con mi hijo personalmente. Cada que yo quería hablar con ella estaba disponible, no porque sea americana o latina, simplemente con el dolor principal nunca lo tuve. Siempre tenía que ser cita o me lo cambiaban o no podía, o cierto, ¿no? Ahora mi única duda es el por qué la sacaron, este no sé si los padres presentes aquí también les gustaría saber, porque a mí sí. Porque este cambio que hubo con la principal para mí fue bueno porque trajo nuevas cosas hacia la comunidad y no porque seamos latinos, simplemente que pienso que cada cambio es bueno para todos.
He estado en Calistoga durante tres años, la ex-principal, como recuerdo Michelle, tenía críticas y cuando se cambió, o cuando se cambió, incluso entonces cuando esos tipos durante... even then, when during her time, some programs were not there. So the principal didn't really help. And I believe she's referring to the principal before Mrs. Yamas, Michelle. I did support the change for the new principal, not based on race, not based on the fact that she was Latina, not based on any of those things, but just the fact that she did her job. And we need to know why she is now here. She was present, she was accessible, and I don't believe that it was because of race that she was here. In the past, it was always difficult to have access. I want to know basically why she's gone. She brought new things, she brought change, and change is good. And we need to see that change is good and it's good for our community.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Sonia. Tengo aquí en Calistoga ya casi 20 años, tengo tres hijos. Tengo un consejador de high school, tengo otros dos hijos también, que he tenido también así con... Cerca de los maestros y principales. A mí también me gustaría saber qué fue lo que pasó con esta directora, con Miss Yamas. Porque siempre que yo necesité cosas también siempre ella estaba para escucharnos. Me gustó mucho, me gusta que siempre nos invitaba a la casa de café, siempre nos llevaba a los salones a ver qué es lo que estaban haciendo nuestros hijos. Todo eso me gusta mucho de ella y sí me gustaría saber qué es lo que pasó con ella. Este no he tenido muchas, este he tenido altas y bajas con maestros y todo aquí, pero hemos salido adelante y este... Y yo sé como dicen, ella fue la bilingüe, la Miss Yamas, la número uno aquí, que siempre nos estaba traduciendo todo y siempre está allí dependiente de cuando estén llegando los hijos, cuando dejan ahí las mamás, o sea, los niños afuera. Siempre la miraba, que estaba pendiente enfrente y todo eso cuenta mucho para mí. Tienen mucho valor todo lo que ella está haciendo por todas nosotras, las latinas y americanas, porque ella no es una persona que siempre está de parte de una persona, que siempre dedicando el tiempo la te lo necesitan, muchas gracias.
I have been in Calistoga for twenty years and I have had relationships with many of the teachers, sometimes ups and downs. I want to know what happened with Mrs. Yamas. She was always in the classroom, she was always present at meetings, for example, when we got together for the cafecito. And she was number one, always translating for us, watching over the kids. And that is of value. What she did for the Latinos and the Anglos, giving time of hers where she saw was needed.
Hello, I'm Ellen Propper and I know many of you and many of you and many of your children. I taught in the elementary school. For twenty years, I have thirty-six years of teaching. I started the family center in 1999 with a small group of people and I'm very happy to see it has developed as it has. I come to this meeting because I'm so concerned about what's going on in the district. And I'd like to start with another look at our goals. The overarching goals of our district include: enhance communication, develop a positive and unified school community. Think about these things as I speak. Our board of trustee roles are delineated as: establishing an efficient and effective structure for the district, which doesn't sound like, provide support to the school superintendent and teaching staff as they carry out the directions of the board. And lastly, to ensure accountability to the public. And I've heard many examples of that not happening. As I've kept in touch with the families and the teachers in this community since I retired in 2010, I have been concerned about many things and I'll mention some of them. In terms of hiring, I think there have been some unfortunate decisions that have caused frequent changes in administration. In terms of school planning, I have been distressed to see drastic reduction of instructional aides in kindergarten and especially in the transitional kindergarten where our most vulnerable and youngest students' needs are not being met. I wasn't aware of the special ed, instructional aides being cut. The placement of children into the first and the TK and the kindergarten has been a decision that is delayed or inconsistent and to the point of exasperation for both parents and teachers, as we heard. I really fear the loss of the gains that the school spent five to ten years on getting out of program improvement and getting these wonderful awards. Without strong leadership, this will not continue. And if we lose those gains, it's going to be very sad for the community, for our public view of it, for the way we look at it. And so they still say "we" because they feel very connected to the district. Another very upsetting thing is that after over nine-tenths of the teachers took a very miserable step and had a "no confidence" quote in the principal, that there were reports of retaliation against the teachers who had spoken out. This is not a collaborative community if that is happening. During getting ready for thinking about this meeting, I attempted to review the district and the school's business via the internet. I'm sorry to say it was rather difficult to access this information. Some of it I couldn't find.
I'm so sorry, your two minutes are out.
And...
We keep going like this.
Just remind you.
It not be tough, it's...
And there are our goals and we made that.
La señora dice, conozco a muchos de los presentes, tengo treinta y seis años de enseñanza y empecé con el centro familiar. Vengo esta junta con una preocupación. Por ejemplo, nuestras metas. Queremos, una de las metas es cómo evaluar o mejorar, cómo establecer un sistema y una estructura con eficiencia, cómo mostrar responsabilidad al público y también que el público sepa lo que está pasando. Pero yo escucho que esto no está sucediendo. También me preocupan muchas otras cosas como el empleo de personal, los cambios frecuentes, la reducción, la reducción en programas del kinder, por ejemplo, algunos de los recortes en una de las poblaciones más necesitadas o donde necesitan más aprender. El TIC que viene siendo el kinder y también las decisiones que han sido expuestas en ese aspecto en programas de esos grados. Temo que se van a perder las ganancias que se han logrado y también esos premios que hemos recibido. Yo pienso que esto no es bueno para la comunidad, no es bueno para el público o la manera en que el público nos ve. También lo que me decepciona es que nueve décimos de los maestros estuvieron, fueron amenazados por haber votado de que no tenían confianza en esto. Entonces, eso es todo, ¿ok? Gracias.
Good evening, my name is Iris López and I'm here to talk in behalf of some of the parents that are behind them. If you can please raise your hand, send me here. Hacen la mano los que quieren llamar por ellos. This group of parents, they are shy, they are afraid to talk because they are afraid that there gonna be some retaliation against their kids. Some of them, they say that their kids, some of the teachers, they've been asking questions to the kids, giving them surveys and say, "Okay, which teacher do you like, this one or that one?" To them, that is something illegal that some of the teachers are doing. I don't say that, I see it because I know that in the school, my daughter is in high school already, but she went to the elementary school all her life. Other concerns, they feel that Mrs. Yamas is no longer here because of bullying from the teachers. They feel like because she is Latina, they don't give her the opportunity to work with her. ¿Quieren alguna otra cosa que digan? Lo que les estoy diciendo aquí al comité es que ustedes no quisieron, les da pena hablar y expresar su opinión porque tienen temor de que sus hijos sean reprendidos o que ustedes también no tengan una buena relación con los maestros. Lo que ustedes quieren son respuestas porque piensan que Mrs. Yamas la han atosigado al punto de que ella se ha ido. ¿Alguna otra cosa que quieran que le...?
A mí me gustaría que ella estuviera presente, para que ella pudiera dar su punto de vista en frente a los maestros, cuál es la razón por la que los maestros no la quieren a ella y ella decir lo que los maestros dicen, que ella no hace eso, que ella no hace lo otro.
She wants to know, she wants to say that Miss Yamas should be here and she should have the opportunity to address the problem. I think my time is up. Okay, I thank you.
Una vez, yo nada más quiero decir unas pocas palabras. Yo he escuchado puras quejas de Miss Yamas, para mí ella ha sido lo mejor para mi niña. Ella, no solo mi niña, sino yo pienso que la mayoría de niños se expresa bastante bien de ella. Y solo nos quejamos que ella no hace, que ella no pone atención, pero también nosotros como padres tenemos que ir a dar ayudas a las escuelas, ayudarles a leer, ayudarlas a cuidar. A mí me ha tocado simplemente cuando los paseos, que no se completan muchas de las veces, ni americanos, ni hispanos para ir a cuidar a nuestros hijos. Entonces les queremos dejar, le queremos dejar todo el trabajo a ella y yo pienso que no es justo. Si queremos una buena escuela, queremos una directora, tenemos que trabajar junto con ella, junto con ella hispanos y americanos. Yo pienso que es una sola familia de escuela y así la debemos deber y no, como dijo la señora, formar chismes, hacer dos partes, porque la escuela es una sola y así la tenemos que conservar por el bien de nuestros hijos. Es lo que yo pienso. Gracias.
I just want to say, she said, that I have only heard complaints about Mrs. Yamas. She doesn't do this, she doesn't do that. I think that we as parents, we need to participate more. Many times, younger parents or even Latino parents don't show up for field trips. And if we want a good principal, we need to come together to support that principal. We need to keep a school unified. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jenny Johnson. The thing that I have noticed tonight is this culture of fear. We have parents that are afraid of retaliation. We have teachers that are afraid of retaliation. And I feel like all of this could have been avoided if the board would have been transparent back in June when all of this came up. And I feel like the erosion that occurred over the summer really could have been avoided. And I would like to know what the board is going to do in the future to help change the culture that seems to be happening at Calistoga because I think we have great parents, I think we have great teachers, I think we have a great board. But something has happened that has caused this severe distrust and it seems that they need to find a way to solve that.
He notado que hay miedo, dice ella, hay miedo de represalia por parte de los padres de que si ellos hablan algo les puede suceder a sus hijos o también los maestros tienen temor a represalia. Esto se pudo haber evitado en junio. Creo que tenemos buenos padres, tenemos buenos maestros, tenemos una buena mesa directiva, pero necesitamos soluciones y necesitamos soluciones.
Hola, buenas noches, mi nombre es Doriana Martina y yo tengo una hija ahora que mi hijo va a entrar en la elementaria y tengo una hija que va a ir a la high school y a la voz de la elementaria. La verdad es muy triste estar mirando esto que está sucediendo en la escuela porque nosotros como papás que los que hemos ayudado estamos involucrados un poco en la escuela, es triste saber que esto está pasando en la escuela, que no quieren que los niños tengan que enterarse, que no quieren a Miss Yamas, que tengan los niños que presenciar, que están hablando mal de su directora en frente de ellos, que no hay respeto y se perdió el respeto. Y nosotros más que queremos saber, bueno, yo en lo personal más que quiero saber qué fue lo que pasó, por qué se fue, porque yo creo que es obvio lo que, por qué se fue ella. Nosotros creo que lo estamos viendo, nomás queremos oír escucharlo, pero lo vemos. Lo que yo estoy diciendo, que en vez de queramos saber qué fue lo que pasó, queremos, yo quiero una solución para la escuela donde va mi hijo. Porque es verdad que hay buenos maestros, mi hijo ahora tiene una maestra muy buena. Pero también creo que los padres nos hemos desilusionado un poco con todo esto que está pasando en la escuela, nos hemos desilusionado a un poco de algunos maestros por lo que está sucediendo. Ahorita lo que queremos es soluciones, queremos, yo como mamá quiero una solución de lo que está pasando, que actúen ya. Y yo tengo una pregunta para ustedes, ¿no? ¿Por qué tanta falta de respeto? ¿Por qué han permitido tanta falta de respeto? ¿Por qué han permitido que las cosas lleguen hasta aquí? No lo entiendo, pero la verdad más que una respuesta, yo quiero una solución para la escuela donde asiste mi hijo, que esté seguro. Y recuerden, lo importante es primero los niños y que estén seguros y su educación, que todos vamos de la mano, tanto los maestros como los papás que están en la escuela.
She said she has a daughter in high school and a son at the elementary school. I'm sad to see what's happening. We are involved in the school. Kids have to witness that the principal is talked about in negative voice. Why is she gone? I asked, was it hate? I want to know. I want to know. I know that there are good teachers, there are good parents, but the parents are the solution about some teachers. As... I would like to ask for solutions from you. Why such a lack of respect? Why is there such a lack of respect? I want safety, education, parents and teachers hand in hand, working for our children.
Buenas noches, a todos los presentes. Mi nombre es Socorro Padilla. Tengo tres niños en Calistoga Elementary. El motivo de que estoy aquí es porque a mí lo que me preocupa y me he dado cuenta es que no hay suficiente comunicación entre la escuela y los padres de familia. Cuando los niños entran a un nuevo ciclo escolar, les proporcionan un sobre con muchas hojas, pues básicamente para ver todos los datos de los niños e incluyendo hay una hoja azul. Esa hoja azul es para que los padres se anoten como voluntarios y puedan ayudar a la escuela en lo que hace falta. El punto es que yo he visto que esa hoja azul se queda guardada y cuando en realidad hay cosas que yo he notado que hace falta, que uno como papá puede colaborar, no hay ese llamado. ese llamado, o sea, no nos llaman para decir, pedir apoyo en ciertas cosas del salud. En la conferencia pasada que tuve con mi hijo menor, yo preguntaba sobre el programa de creando un lector. A la maestra me dijo que ese programa de las bolsas rojas que daban a los niños cada semana, perdón, para que empezaran a leer desde pequeños, no las estaban dando porque no había padres voluntarios para rellenar esas bolsas y repartirlas a los niños. Entonces eso a mí sí se me hizo preocupante, porque digo, desde el kinder empiezan con la lectura. Entonces si no lo fomentamos porque no hay voluntarios, siento que no es algo justificable, ya que eso, si no lo haces desde pequeño, se va grabando la situación. Y una cosa lleva de la mano a otra. Entonces eso sí, me preocupó un poquito que no haya comunicación o no haya llamado para, para que los padres nos involucremos. También este, formo del comité de ELAC y ya es muy triste ver que en las juntas, desgraciadamente los padres no van a las juntas. Bueno, ya sé por qué se falta de comité, pero siempre estaba hacia la juntas. Entonces, pues bueno, en principio siento que la comunicación y pues invitar a todos que por favor se integren y participemos para nuestros hijos.
I have three kids in elementary school. And I want to tell you why I'm here today. I want to say that there is not enough communication between school and parents. When kids begin the school year, they have a packet and there's a blue sheet in there. That blue sheet is to, when the parents volunteer, they fill it out and that sheet for some reason is put away, is not touched. The parents are not called to help. So, at the last parent conference, I asked about the supporting a reader. Why wasn't the bag being given out to the children? And I was told that there were not enough parent volunteers to fill the bag. This is not justified. I am concerned that the parents aren't being called to participate. I am participating in ELAC and I'm parent and I see that other parents don't show up. So we need communication, please more participation from our families and our kids.
My name is Mark Alendo. I have three daughters, one in first grade, one in fifth grade, and one in eighth grade. We have been involved in the community. It's evident that this community is divided right now. We have three minutes to speak. Time is an item which we cannot acquire. My eighth grade had a bad teacher and she was held back. Her grade, her education diminished from that one year and she caught up as she came here. And my wife gave me a quote today by a poet in which I admire, Rumi. It says, "Raise your words, not your voices. It is the rain that waters the flowers, not the thunder." So this can cannot be kicked down the road any further. I hope that you take good action.
How do you translate poetry? But I'll try my best. What I heard and I will ask you again, please, because I need to hear the part.
I can say in Spanish.
Can you say in Spanish?
Suben las palabras, no la voz, porque es la lluvia que se crece las flores. Not the thunder, como se dice the thunder. ¿El freno? Bueno, do it, freno.
Es un poema que acaba de expresar el señor acerca de lo que él y su esposa piensan en cuanto a la educación. Pero él hablaba de que él tenía, tiene tres hijas en escuela primaria y es evidente, dice él, que la comunicación está, ha sido rota o está rota. Dice, "Mi hija estaba un poco atrasada cuando llegó y..."
I need your help for the second part.
Él dice que cuando la maestra, la directora Yamas llegó, su hija había estado atrasada en sus materias, pero cuando la directora llegó a la escuela, la niña subió en sus grados. Es su testimonio.
Yo solamente quiero dar un, no sé, como un testimonio que yo pase también con esta situación que está pasando. O yo me llamo María Trinidad Mer. Sabe que yo tengo un hijo en quinto grado, el año pasado estaba en cuarto, y yo tuve un problema acerca de que también hay veces los padres tenemos miedo. Yo ahorita tengo miedo porque yo, mi hijo fue un poco, le bajaron la autoestima, hubo un maestro. Entonces yo no sabía qué hacer y yo, a lo que único que me quedaba a mí es ir con la directora Yamas. Y la directora Yamas pues me ayudó, me levantó la autoestima, le levantó la autoestima a mi hijo. Y yo creo que tal vez muchos no hablamos por miedo. Yo a mi hijo ya no lo dejé ir ni al club de niños porque seguí con ese miedo. Pero yo, lo que vengo es que yo pues he superado ese miedo y mi hijo también. Y pues mi, lo que yo también estoy aquí porque yo también le agarré cariño a la señora Yamas, que ella pues, a lo mejor no es mucho, pero en poco tiempo que estuve ahí, yo creo que para mí ella fue una persona muy, que se acercó a nosotros, los padres, y que nos daba el ánimo para seguir adelante. Eso es todo lo que yo quiero decir, gracias.
I want to give testimony, she said, I have a son in fifth grade. I had problems. I was very afraid. I did not know what to do and my self-esteem was hurt or pushed down even more when I had a problem with one of the teachers. But when Mrs. Yamas came in her position, she lifted me up and my self-esteem, my self-esteem. My son, my son also did much better. I was fearful before, but Mrs. Yamas helped me to overcome that fear. I loved Mrs. Yamas. The short time that she was here, she showed that she could work with us. She showed that we could work together. And I would like to see us all move ahead.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Verónica Guzmán y yo vengo a decirles que Mrs. Yamas también me ayudó mucho porque mi hijo, yo he tenido problemas siempre con el aprendizaje de mi hijo desde que estaba en kinder, reprobó los dos años de kinder, así es que no tengo, puedo decir que es ahora cuando mi hijo tiene los problemas porque siempre desde que estuvo en kinder los ha tenido, empezamos a ver cómo ayudarlo con la ayuda de la directora y yo tengo que agradecerle que ella me ayudó y ahorita siempre han estado trabajando con mi hijo para poder ayudarlo a salir adelante antes de que entre aquí a la high school. Y mi hijo está en sexto grado y ella me ayudó mucho para hacer de pruebas y cosas a lo que necesitaba mi hijo. Gracias.
I'm here to say that Mrs. Yamas helped me. My son was doing not well at all since kinder. We started to see how to help him together. She started to help me to investigate and to find help. She showed me where to go for help. There were tests done on my son and with her help, we were able to move to, to move forward.
Mi nombre es Ana. Bueno, yo conocí muy poco a la directora, pero en sí, para mí es una persona excelente porque desde el primer momento ella mostró el entusiasmo de querer ayudarnos. Yo toco una muy mala experiencia con uno de los maestros porque, bueno, el maestro va a saber quién es, pero no lo voy a decir. Uno de mis hijos tenía que dar un reconocimiento porque era día de reconocimientos y la maestra olvidó darle reconocimiento a mi hija y ella se soltó a llorar. Todo el grupo se tomó la fotografía y ella se le olvidó dárselo y en el momento fui a la reparación y me dijo, "No, no se tiene que dar a ella, le gusta seguro". Y lo checó y dijo, "Oh, sí, disculpa, me equivoqué". Pero a mi hija eso es un drama que no puedo quitárselo. O sea, no por eso, yo hubiera querido correrle en ese momento. Personalmente lo digo que sí, porque a mi hija no se le puede olvidar. Pero igual, no lo hice, fui con la directora después de tiempo y me dijo, "Ana, ¿por qué no lo hiciste en el momento? O fue un error mío?" Pero no por eso pedí que la corriera. O sea, a lo mejor sí fue un error de ella, pero a las personas yo creo que un acusado tiene que estar presente para defenderse. Nadie puede defenderse sin estar presente, ella no está aquí. O sea, ella tenía que haber estado aquí para poder estar aquí donde estoy yo ahora y defenderse. Podemos decir muchas cosas, pero ya no está aquí. No llegué desde el principio de la junta, pero me hubiera gustado mucho haber escuchado algunos de los maestros dar su punto de vista por qué no las quiere, cuál es la razón. Cuál es la razón exacta por qué no la quieren ahí. O sea, no somos moneditas de oro, no todos queremos bien a toda la gente, pero todos merecemos una oportunidad. Y en muy poco tiempo el que a ella es su ahí para poder demostrar lo que ella puede. Y bueno, yo, perdón, yo me voy ahora, pero sí me gustaría saber si ustedes ya tienen una respuesta hoy para decirnos si ella va a regresar o no va a regresar. Eso es todo.
I knew Mrs. Yamas for only a short time. She showed how to help us. She showed how to help ourselves. I had trouble with one teacher. I'm sure that that teacher knows about it because I'm speaking about that teacher right now. One of the things that happened is that my daughter was supposed to get recognition at one point and she did not get the recognition based on the state that was made. And the teacher apologized and said, "Yes, I'm sorry, I totally missed it." But my daughter was traumatized. She cried about it because she was not recognized and she deserved to be recognized. She will never forget that. So I went to the principal, Mrs. Yamas, and she said, "Why didn't you come talk about this when it happened?" But the truth of it is, I have to say that I was, I did not speak up. I did not say anything. And so, the other thing that I want to talk about, which is separate, is she's not here to defend herself. I think that every person who's accused of something needs to be present to defend themselves. Why don't they like her? We are not going to please everyone, but we all deserve a chance to show our work. We need, we need, we need to know, we need an answer as far as why she's not here and if she is coming back or not.
Item 11.0, organizational meeting, all of us keys. 11.1, appoint Sofia Procedo as the 2015-2016 Calistoga Juniors School Board's Strategic Assistant. I like you. You're a good one. You're a good one. Thank you. And this is our board call. Eric Maxwell.
Aye.
Cross the attention. Cross the, do you?
Aye.
Christina.
Aye.
Christina Lonsit.
Aye.
Cross the board.
Cross the board. Item 12.0, reports, recognition, information and discussion items. 12.1, culinary update report, strong word, director of food services. Welcome in.
Hi, thank you for having me. All right, ladies and gents, for those of you who don't know, my name is Ed Burke. I'm the food service director here on campus. And if you have any questions, concerns about your ideas, please feel free to come talk to me. We love suggestions. We're having a contest with our class on making these recipes. It's pretty rad. So we're here today to talk about culinary Calistoga. We have a big fan of really old books, where they leave the title and then have something just below it that seems almost weather-related. So culinary Calistoga end 20, October 2015, or update. I started with this picture because this is what we want students to be able to do, demonstrate their skills and knowledge with a nice omelette, omelette bouche. That's like the pinnacle of skill development, demonstrating all those skills. That's our students, right? Pretty rad. So ladies and gents, the first thing to start with food safety. Because we're in a functional kitchen, all of the students are going to have some responsibility over themselves in a kitchen that produces meals for hundreds of their peers every single day. So food safety was arguably my favorite section. We got to tell gross house stories, hand aids, and things that don't really work really well. And then we got to talk about how accountability works. We are responsible for ourselves, responsible for our team, responsible for our safety and the safety of people that we serve. And everyone was, incredibly, "Are you trying to scare us? Are you trying to tell us scary stories?" I said, "Yeah, because they actually have bad things happen because we don't wash our hands." So we had a great conversation about food safety and we practice that every single day. We have great conversations where students will stop and say, "Hey, did you touch your face? You should really go wash your hands." I love, that's part of my day. We talked about site safety. This is again terrible, terrible stories. Most of them happen here. Someone's running in the kitchen, slips and falls. Uh-oh, what happens next? Someone's not communicating well, now you have burns all over. We had a great conversation about a friend of mine who used cursing instead of actual productive words to describe what was happening to him. As a result, he dropped a whole mess of boiling hot water across my legs because cursing is not an effective tool. So we had a great conversation about how cursing is not appropriate, even if you hurt yourself, it's still not okay to curse in the kitchen. Because we wanted to be productive with our words, we wanted to be able to say, "Hey, I burned my hand and I dropped this pot, I'm going to get out of the way." So, pretty rad. So we had a great conversation with site safety. I have to say, nothing pleases me more than when a student says, "Hey, you're not lifting properly. Could you lift your back just now?" I was like, "Yes, I did, sorry." So they'll say, "Hey, you should lift the power zone, show me how." I was like, "I love it, fantastic." Students are doing really well there. So the time since we repaired this report and the time that we have met, we've also moved past, we've gone into the kitchen several times. We're working on culinary math, AKA how to make or break your restaurant. We're now working on recipes. We're in the kitchen, we're doing production. Our bakery section made some of the most amazing granola. We served to staff members on Monday morning during craft professional development, really wonderful stuff. We're going to serve it again tomorrow. It was, it was amazing. Love that granola. So we had some challenges. There were some things that didn't look out the way we thought, but this is always a positive thing. One of the first things was professionalism. I mentioned cursing. We had a really lengthy discussion about cursing because every once in a while, you hear a four-letter word that doesn't look long in our kitchen. And so we'll say, "Hey, is that really the work we shouldn't be using in a professional setting?" So we say, "Hey, guys, you're really not students. You are not professionals in training. This is a professional setting. You're going to be presenting yourself. And more importantly, you're going to be presenting me and what my values are. And I don't curse at work, so you can do it." So professionalism was a really interesting challenge. Our students have risen to that challenge. They are now doing really, really well in terms of professionalism. Every once in a while we have to slip, every once in a while we have to circle back and say, "Hey, guys, talk this out." Professionalism is fantastic. Stations is an interesting thing. I'm sure you all remember in high school, you had a group of friends you just loved to hang out with all day, every day, have some side conversations, they were going really well. So we intentionally put them with people that they don't hang out with very often in their station to build teamwork. As you're probably well aware, at your job sites, you may not necessarily work with people that you like or people that you normally hang out with. And so this is an opportunity for us to build out those teamwork skills. So we have students that have very rarely spoken to each other socially. We now have to communicate constantly and find ways to connect at work within their stations. Planning is hard, and it's a lot less fun than just jumping in and doing stuff. After the fire attack, we, our students said, Ed, the entire class, all twenty of us, have to get up and go down there and do something. I said, "Okay, we're all at twenty people, B. We haven't really developed a lot of professional skill sets. What are we going to do?" And a student raised his hand and said, "Well, we could just like, you know, hug somebody." I said, "That's great, there's a place for that." But what we need is to plan ahead, find a place for us, where all twenty of us can be productive and participate and more importantly, be effective in that position. So we had a conversation about the skills we learn today are going to help us with the next disaster. There was a need, a very real need for qualified chefs and cooks, the people who have worked with food, to just jump in there and just do whatever needed to be done. Our students weren't really ready for that, that was kind of hard sell. But we're ready for, preparing for the next time, it's going to be a lot, a lot of fun. Oops. So our next steps, and this is very fitting image because we are going all the way to the top. It's going to be a long trip, but we're going to make it. So number one question, when are we going to go in the kitchen, Ed? This is one of my favorite questions. Because I would say, what are you going to do to get there? We're going to learn how to use the right skills, we're doing bakery, we are doing a con station, and most importantly, our students are working with our staff. They're getting a lot of experiences there. I had a wonderful question just last week. A student who wasn't really engaging much with the curriculum says, "Ed, can I stay along? Can I come back tomorrow?" I had a student come up to me and say, "Hey, Ed, we didn't finish the mashed potatoes. We got to go in the kitchen today and finish those mashed potatoes for service on Tuesday." I love that, that is awesome. Assessments is something that we are constantly looking at. We want to know what are we producing, who are we producing for, and what kind of metrics are we designed with? Are we wasting food more than we should? Are we utilizing food as much as that possible? So we're doing tons of assessments along the way. This is one of my favorite slides. Student engagement is kind of an issue. When I came on campus, when I walked in the classroom, I recognized maybe two students from the lunch line and they didn't know my name. So coming from a place where students know their teachers, they've heard stories about teachers, they've recognized their faces, student engagement was a bit of a challenge. So we found that shared experiences, like this cartoon, enabled us to have conversations about what we walked in the class. From this cartoon, we started identifying recipes that we can make and we can demonstrate things that we care strongly about. There is a strawberry shortcake that they use on this show. It's a great, it's a great dramatic flair. We're going to be making it in class for their peers and hopefully we're going to put it on the spirit day. Is that a pretty rad? Cartoons are the bridge between generations, of course. And last but not least, we're going to have guest speakers. And as interesting as I am, we carry a ton, fifty minutes a day, five days a week. You're kind of a brilliant guy, you're like, "All right, I can hear different voices here." So we're reaching out some folks, we want to get guest speakers. We want somebody to come in with a whole day and say, "We're taking this apart together." And as you can see, this guy has a lot more interesting stories than I do just based on his tattoos alone, there's some stories there. So we want to have some guest speakers come through. Last but not least, I want to say thank you. This is a big thing to thank, it's an open program. What we do here is very innovative. I've heard of only one other program that does it and we are going to go to competition with them, we're going to demonstrate calistoga as a better. I'd also like to thank our administration, our board of trustees. I'd like to thank Dr. Brown, Ms. McCoy, and Ms. Bone for providing a lot of our feedback. Working with high school students has been a challenge, but it's also been a lot of fun. And frankly, I think this has been a fantastic experience, so thank you. Any questions, concerns, comments?
How many students are you currently working with in that?
We have twenty students, ranging from sophomores to seniors.
Is there, is there any thoughts on doing anything for the junior high kids?
Fantastic question. So the question was, any thoughts on providing services for junior high? We are exploring some things we could do. The challenge that we have is that as a commercial production facility, so when we are in there, there's hot hands, there's always movement. If we were to go in there, it would have to be with a lot of planning consideration, with gauge appropriate activities and taking into account the occupational hazards that are there. But I love the idea. I know age and expressed some interest in joining us, so let's talk.
Love that.
Is there a, is there an elected, how does somebody get into your class?
It is an elected class, yes.
It's elected.
Any other questions, concerns, comments?
When you're ready, sample.
You know what, I have some granola. Tomorrow, before we breakfast, we do our offering company with granola coffee gate. So I think we're going to use some of that granola, it's pretty rad. So come and buy some of your breakfast and learn that.
We want to, I want to hear. Why do you also like to ask you perhaps a demonstration or a next presentation you do on students' ed works?
I have a task, I love it. I have nothing like a public demonstration that kind of hits the impetus going like, "I really should be doing better in class to represent the public." Any other questions, concerns, comments? My words go twice. All right, thank you very much.
Item twelve point two, place two, that day, for general improvement.
I would like to remind the board that Jeff is a presenter of a lot of cultural work which we're in the next month, November. Item four, we're almost complete, they actually work on all the time in the most significant happen at this school, basically, and we're just very surprised. So it won't be here in November. And I know we have this scheduled, the same tour, but I would love to be able to do it at twelve o'clock that day, in the Jeff Center. And to let me know what is that, what you mean. So you can see the modernization that was completed as part of the COP at the junior school, as well as the life of plant that we have completed. The junior high school improvements we are making, the library, the bookshop, and many other areas. We're going to do this, 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 this. It's a four o'clock, next morning, November second.
Any questions, comments from the board, from the public?
Item twelve point three, I'm sorry, you have completed on the board?
Wait, I'm so sorry, I'm sorry, were we allowed to comment what she was just talking about? We can't hear anything that you're saying? Were you just talking about the construction that's going on with all the schools, including the elementary school?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm just, I just wanted to know whether the fire system is working properly now?
It is, it was approved and by the fire chief. So yes, from the very beginning, we never had an issue with the fire.
Okay, and then the other thing that I've seen this big rumor going around and that is the internet phone system in the classrooms. Is that the only way that the teachers can communicate to the offices? Is the internet phone system?
It is a system that we have right now and, could you like to go inside?
Yes, actually, yeah, sorry. Actually, we, we're aware of the issues with the phones and they are working properly. They, the office staff can also communicate to the teachers via the P A, via the P A system as well. And they also have a landline in the office in case they need to call up.
To call out to other, not to the classrooms, to, to say to outside persons.
Also, we should mention that the new fire alarm basically also acts as an intercom. So, there's a speaker in each one of the classrooms. If you ever have any questions, please come to us and ask us.
Anybody else have any more questions?
Yeah.
Over here.
Yeah. You said they have a landline and they could call out? So if it's down, can we call in, ring the normal number to the landline? So we can get a hold of you?
It's a different number.
It's a different number, so if they're down and we need to call you, we can get a hold of you.
If the phones are down, we can't call some calls.
Are you saying the internet phones, if the internet is down, there's no communication? But there is a landline and we don't know the number or not following?
If the phones, if the internet is down and the phones are down, you cannot communicate into the school site. The school office can't communicate to the school site staff.
So, but more specifically, if the phones are down, so my understanding is like if the power goes out, then the internet goes out, so then the phones are down?
Correct.
And if there's some emergency on campus, does that landline phone still work? Or is that an electric-based phone as well?
That landline phone should still work.
Should or will?
And the intercom is really a big piece of that in case there was an emergency as well.
Well, how would the intercom call the fire department or the police or? So I'm saying if there was, if there was an emergency on campus that caused the power to go out, how would they alert authorities or call for help or inform us of what's happening or anything like that?
The site administrators have district-issue cell phones and also they can basically send out a local call by using their cell phone.
Their cell phones.
Correct. They don't need to use the computer in a web-based and they can do it directly to the very, to send out a local call, like the ones you get.
Okay, even if their computers are down?
Even if their computers are down. It has to be with the cell towers, now that the cell towers are down.
Right, well, you said it was web-based, that was why I was worried about that.
Okay, it's a total. Both plots that right now are torn up are going to be grass with reclaimed water?
They will and Chris can tell you more about it. Unfortunately, landscapers, I understand, are really busy with what is going on in the Lake County area and we're having a hard time finding any landscaper that can come in and take care of it.
We will be landscaping there. It is reclaimed water there.
Well, that's not a question, I just wondered, it's all going to be, I, I told you it was going to be grass.
Yeah, my, my idea is along the building to have bushes, grass, and then three trees in the main area and then the three trees that were removed for the new sewage line that was put in. So, um...
Well, no one's going to yell at you, that's good.
Yeah. So I did have a company come out and their price was outrageous. I don't know if it's because they know that we've been having a hard time getting somebody. I was actually a parent who pulled up to pick up their kid at the elementary school when I was looking at it. I got his card and then he directed me to his boss, so. He came out and even the project manager on the job said that the, the, the price per square foot on certain things was outrageous, so. I actually, the basketball coach here has landscaping business and I've been talking with him, we just haven't had a chance to get over there and meet. So it'd be nice to be able to get someone local to do it as opposed to somebody from outside the area.
Jack will do it for a price.
Yeah, exactly. Does that answer your question?
If you know anyone that can give us a deal, let us know.
Yeah, right? Yeah, thank you.
So, moving on to, I know about the home office report.
Thank you. I just want to report that in the junior high, this year we did some things different during our homecoming activities at the school. We made our first ever float that we had in the parade. We had forty kids over building the, building the float outside my yard. It was quite experience. You know, we also participated in the powder puff game on Monday as well as having our cheerleaders lead the, lead the parade. As, as a junior high, our goals this year are really to bring community as seventh, eighth, the collective, not just seventh grade or eighth grade. So all our field trips, we planned together, so we have several field trips to build that community. One of them is ropes course, unfortunately, it was supposed to happen today, but we had some snafu, so. We've been able to reschedule that for two, in two weeks, we'll be going down to Napa for a, for the rope course. As I said, all of our planning around the junior high is then to build a community and to really integrate our curriculum so that it looks and feels that all teachers are on board with the same, with the same feel. The other, one of my other positions is overseeing calistades and I want to say that Martha McCoy is a great person for this program. She really, it's, it's amazing, you know, she was a kindergarten teacher last year and now she's with, with the kids at calistades at the high school, she's done a wonderful job. She, she's brought in some innovative programs such as, they're doing art, art projects at the Calisada Art Center on Thursdays around stereotypes of, of students who might be calistades. They have been doing some yoga classes with Headstand, which has been a very community-based support to get that program, they're in the last part of the pilot that they're trying. The kids, you know, it's, it's putting them outside of their comfort zone, so it's been a challenge, but, or, and they get over it and they're really participating and see what's... So when I ask the kids, "How you like the yoga?", you know, they reluctantly say, "It was great." Again, there's another program that she brought in, a youth entrepreneurship program. She's been working with Kylie Gamble to design a program especially for the students at calistades. The other day I was observing a lesson and they brought in some street art and they're creating some really cool art pieces that will be displayed and turn that into some kind of entrepreneur, business type thing. Her focus this year has really been around writing and getting kids writing. And in doing so, they've gotten great press. They've written, written commentaries to the local papers that we've seen printed there. They've also gone out and helped at the fairgrounds during the, during the evacuation. They've been out to the community, you know, trying to show our community what the kids at calistades are capable of doing and trying to turn that around and have a really good image of our students.
I have a question. My son is Asia and he's pretty quiet regarding what kind of information comes home from junior high. What would you recommend that I do other than grilling him or digging through his backpack to find out what's going on? I didn't know about any of the homecoming stuff, I didn't know about the powder puff, I didn't know any of that stuff. And so how would you recommend that I get that information?
Sure, so our teachers, the information should be coming almost through the teachers. And if you're having trouble, please let me know and I will talk to them and make sure that the communication gets out better.
You mean from the teacher to the student?
To the student, but I can also have them contact you directly if that's, if that works better. I know with some students it does. We also use the call-out system. So if you're not getting any calls about the events that are coming up, please let me know. You know, I've checked to see how many errors come up and if there's numbers that are incorrect or... I've been trying to send things out to let folks know. But there should have been an email that came out before homecoming. If you didn't get that, please let me know because we're using our, our ARI system to send that out with Blackboard. So let me know if you didn't get anything. Sometimes those, those kinds of messages end up in spam. So let me know and we'll, we'll research it a little bit more.
Yeah, I'll look through all my contacts and try to figure that out, thank you.
On that, it was like, our son heard that, what was it, back to school night was happening, following week and we didn't actually get a notification until like forty-eight hours before the event. It didn't happen, if it was on Wednesdays, it happened on Monday. We really, we looked, we did, we searched it back and back, we asked him and he heard nothing other than that one announcement. I attempted to sign up for email notices on the website. I attempted to sign up for email notices on the website, that didn't work. I found it got in through another parent who had the contact for that, but communications, please, I know you guys have a new website and are putting it up. I, I forget, it doesn't have any new information, just the format, but it really needs, you need to have that information. It should just be posted easily accessible so we can check, you know, because papers get, get lost, people, kids forget, so please.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Oh, I have one more thing, I'm sorry. There's the school dance.
Yes.
I, I only knew about that through him, and I was surprised that I got the information from him, he's very excited. But I still haven't heard anything officially, so I don't know anything about the school dance.
I'll, I'll check on it.
Okay, thank you.
I think I'm supposed to get that out.
Thank you. Because I talked already, I'm gonna turn on his bad wagon here, but one of the questions that came up was about how many students were in this class. He does have twenty, but what he didn't say was that there was over fifty-five students who wanted his class, which was one of our largest number of requests for doing in class. Because of the size of the agenda and the need for safety, twenty was all the program in the class. He's done a great job, but like someone said earlier, he stood up during that time period and really was here a lot about families of fire victims, and some of our athletic boosters. I don't think, I don't think he said about how hard it was.
We appreciate that as well. Our students, our seniors went over one day in groups of twenty and twenty-five. What was amazing from that day was what they came back from and how the hurt and pain they have felt in the past. Some of our students have been homeless at one point in time, and the fact that they were able to give back and help and just give hugs and be reassuring was one of the things that came out of the global tragedy was something that was really positive. And we grieved them to the day, we talked about the experience like, Family Center was able to get backpacks together, and our kids stepped up, they all were in a long line and were stuffing backpacks, and it was really quite amazing how our students rallied around. And like someone had said, it really was this large extended Calistoga family coming together and helping other families. So our students really rose to the occasion and were very loved by the community. About academics, we have five different classes this year. Culinary class, which I talked about. We have introduction to computers and programming class. We have our future educators class, I want to thank the elementary teachers who are still here, who stepped up and who are inviting our, basically our juniors and seniors to come into their classes and observe. Focus is around science, technology, geometry, and mathematics, and they'll eventually be teaching in the classrooms in elementary school. And the goal, goal of focus is to give them that, that exposure to what it's like to be an educator at different levels. And our students are really loving it. We've created partnerships with two post-secondary institutions. One is through our Napa Valley College, they're currently teaching a class in the afternoon around child development because they know our students are going to be one of the classrooms working. And then another partnership is with Southern State University, and our students, when they have finished with this class, could have the potential of having nine college units. And our students, most of our students are bilingual, and so it's a wonderful opportunity for them to use their skills and talents in an educational setting, and they're really thrilled about possibly pursuing a career in education at whatever level, preschool, teaching in elementary schools, instructional labor, whatever it is, we're very excited about that. Our computer science equipment class has run really well, we had a large interest in that. And then we also have a new AP Spanish language and journalism, and we're seeing, see, excuse me, that one of the classes that did the best in the AP scores was our Spanish four class. It wasn't taught as an AP class, and so now we're legitimizing this, and our students will be able to get the extra GPA bump and look right on their college transfers that they actually have AP Spanish language classes, and we expect great things and great scores from these students. And then we have journalism class, new journalists. These are all new classes to our school. We're trying to provide our juniors and seniors to be exposed to possible major careers so that when they leave here, not only can they have the skill set to be successful to really go, but they have different exposures, so we're excited about that. First of the year went really well, a lot of hard work going into the spring, so we have to do a lot of class changes, so everything, I think, really worked well at the end of the year. Data about AP exams is a new thing to work out. We've encouraged our staff members to embrace keeping students on campus, so we have quite a few new clubs, want our students to feel more involved, active participants, as they know our students are going to leave for lunch, they will off-campus leave. So we have Mathletes Club, supporting those students who are interested in math and they want to do competitions related around math. We have a new Engineering Club, Mathletes Club is being sponsored by Kathy Bone, one of our math teachers. Engineering Club by one of our new science teachers, that's Miss Brooks, and they've actually got a field trip planned to Google, Google's gonna give them the tour, it's gonna be really neat. And then the other field trip will be to test, so we'll learn about alternative energy, so we'll be really excited to go there. We have an Interperus Club, and we actually unveiled our students' journey back to school night. In the past, what I learned last year was that if a parent who was bilingual, who was Spanish, they came back to school night and the teacher didn't speak Spanish, it was difficult to experience. So Miss Roma, our new college and career specialist, gathered these students together. We have an Interperus Club, and we're very excited about that, and they came back to school night, and they were in each classroom helping to interpret for the teachers, and what really was neat for me to see was that if there were, if there was time, they were out roaming around the campus, looking for ways that they could help out, and direct families to different locations, and that was really exciting. And they felt confident when they were back to school. We've created a partnership with Rotary, this is Craig Morales, our counselor, is the advisor, and it's an interact club, maybe it's a new, or interactive high school. So that is a very big club, it's a seven through twelve club, so we're creating a whole thing. A partnership with the Seraphimus, there's an S-club, that's Miss, Kirsten Villa Cruz is the advisor, and our French teacher has started a French club. And one of the clubs that carried over last year is the Gay Street Alliance, and they are very active and will be active this week, and so that's exciting too.
Can I ask you, what did, what did you say, the club that was seven to twelve?
It's called Interact. It's a partnership with Rotary, it's a service-oriented club, so students plan with the Rotarians in the community to do community service projects either here on campus or off-campus. It's the same thing with the Seraphimus, both clubs that deal with service. And the community knows that our students are required to spend so many hours in community service before they graduate, and for some of our students, they far exceed that, and they're always looking for ways to help, help out the community in the back. So having clubs like this and having a partnership with people who are providing services to the community is really exciting for us. Beginning of the year, we started with some inservices. We saw last year that there was a need for to focus in on our students who are E.L., students who are long-term E.L.s, and strategies should help to remove them, and they've been designated, and it's been exciting because we're seeing those practices that were learned the first two days in the classroom, and they're embracing that. And one of the philosophies that I have is that I don't want past initiatives to die. I think it's important that we keep moving forward, so what we've been talking about is staffed with project-based learning, strategies that we learned, Abbott, so all those things are revisiting again and making sure that it's always at the forefront. Also delving into the data that we're getting back in from our statewide testing and looking at where is we, where we can celebrate and where are we needing to improve. And our PD Day or Special Development Day on Monday did that, and we're starting to create a long-term goal for the year to improve specific areas that we find that we are lacking, and that'll be the focus, and we'll have constant check-ins with that and constant reflection. At the end of the year, our hope is we'll have a time to reflect and celebrate on our success, and with those strategies that we implemented, those areas will be about to be improved.
This is for athletic boosters, if you, any of you want to be booster members, it is twenty dollars for singles and forty dollars for family members.
And speaking of the juniors near high school master schedule, we're gonna start with that. The average class size in seven to twelfth grade is eighteen students per class. We have some classes that are very small, they can be five, six, nine, and some of them twenty-nine, so we're very fortunate to have that type of class size at the secondary level. For the entry, we have class sizes that average in the low twenties, basically. Kindergarten, right now, at twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-four, and then the others, twenty-one, nineteen, twenty, that's first grade. Second grade, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and third grade, all at twenty-one students. Fourth grade, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-five. Fifth grade, nineteen, twenty, nineteen, eighteen, and sixth grade, twenty-one, nineteen, twenty. So those are the class sizes, master schedule for this year.
Any questions? Comments on the board?
Items for point six, summer school reason report submitted by General Jeremy Bro. That, that is for your information, the boosters didn't have a meeting last one, so that's why it must be the same, but just give you a general review of the report of this summer school. We don't have it on the agenda, but I think that I need to have it. We have a same action, we have a reaction. Items are twelve point seven, they don't have different chronicles, we can gather by the quantities. This is for your information, I know this part things here, do you have anything to add?
Nothing, thank you.
Items are thirteen point two, they come from Canada, it's required for the board. Actions proposed for the consent agenda are seen to be in nature and must be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless any member of the board, the audience, or staff request the specific items to be removed from the consent agenda on separate action. Any changes or change points of us to the consent?
I have a question. I'm sorry. So there are some items on here as a booster's member that are interesting to me, and I'm wondering if we would have access to these reports before you vote to approve them or after, or if that's something that we can look at?
Can you mention specifically which items are interesting?
Right, so thirteen point seven, request to accept the ABS Athletics Reconciliation Report. That's something that we've been discussing via email with the superintendent and some Jennifer Rose, I believe, Gemma.
Yes.
And so there have been some questions about the availability of funds and making sure that they're going to where they were intended to be allocated when they were given to the school by boosters. And so it looks like that audit has been completed and is ready to move forward, and I'm wondering if we can have access to that information?
Yes, we did just transition to a software specifically for A.S.C. and we have finished that, and so we do have the account balances, and I'd be happy to...
Okay, and so would that be something that if we could look at and request separate discussion on instead of having it approved with this group of other things? Is that something that our discussion would even be entertained in before it was approved? Specifically because we do want to make sure that the funds were allocated specifically for where we donated them to?
So that's right now, I mean, we'll pull that out, we'll have that discussion right now.
That would be awesome.
So I move that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of the items aforementioned that we'll discuss afterward.
Such as thirteen point seven?
Thirteen point seven.
Thank you.
Okay, this requires our role control, thirteen point seal.
Hi.
Press seal, chief.
Hi.
Pressing hand.
Hi.
Pressing office, hi.
So this is our reconciliation page that we bring to the board every month, but I do have, of course, more detailed reports. Expections are by outlines by different student clubs and balances, and I'd certainly be happy to discuss.
Okay.
We'll provide more information.
Okay, thanks.
This means that we bring that item to the board every, and this is not a, if you're all right?
Sorry, it was a, it's not, 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 it's not. But I did find that you were talking about this.
Thank you.
Will we go?
Thirteen point seven.
The discussion was just that they have it for me.
Press seal, chief. Pressing hand.
Hi.
Pressing office, hi. I think we're being pointing point zero, action item. The protocol for action items include a staff presentation, questions from the board, public input, evaluation by the board, and voting by the board. Reprovision code, there will be a three-minute time limit for person. First item, it is forty point one, the student board meeting resolution, fifteen point zero one. We are pleased to have Sophia Robea, who had been selected, chosen by her peers to represent now at the board, so as a student representative, so they're involved, and so we recommend that the board approve the resolution.
I...
I do, I do that we approved the resolution.
I'll second my motion.
All the two favors, I'm sorry. We are request then formation to the board, Sophia now, of the officials, and now on the session. All the new fellows, Sophia?
Thank you. So I'm Sophia Robea, as they introduce. Thank you for letting me be part of this board. So I'm just gonna introduce myself briefly and then give my report. So I grew up in Paloma with my mom and my brothers, and my, just recently, well, kind of recently, my freshman year, I decided to move in with my father, who grew up in Calistoga all his life, so like, you know, the teacher's here, Mr. Miller can teach him, and he's had a lot of these. So ever since I was a freshman, I've been working to earn money for my college fund, although most of that money has gone to shopping. I still plan on going to college soon, and being a senior now, that's definitely, you know, right there. So I am really excited on what college I would like to go to, but it's definitely my near future. And so as they all said, I was elected by my peers to have this membership in the board, and what I really, the reason I wanted to apply... And what I really, the reason I wanted to apply to be a school board member was really because I like helping people and I like things to be fair. And like earlier, the, when the public got to speak, there was someone who said like that she was speaking for others because they were too shy to speak out. And that's really what I want to do for the school as well. Like, I like to listen to what they're saying, their opinions. And I know I've also been told a lot that the school board likes to hear good things from previous members and from a lot of my, you know, hierarchy people. But I won't always do that necessarily, just because I like to talk about the real issues and what there is for me to say.
You're hired.
On a high notes, so far this school year, I think, has been going truly well. We, like about a month ago or two months ago, I'm not really sure, we took a field trip, the juniors and seniors here, took a field trip to Napa Valley College for a college fair. And I honestly think that it helped a lot of us decide on, like, help us decide on what we're doing. Like I said, I still don't know what I'm doing, but that's just me. So also last week, as was mentioned earlier, was our homecoming week. And thanks to the ASB class, I honestly feel like that was a huge success. And yeah, hopefully, like, everyone else felt that too. I feel like a lot of the school also enjoyed it. And I'm really glad that the junior high was also a part of it this year. On another note, our athletics too has been going really well. Our football team was moved to eight man this year. And we're actually number one in league right now. Our other athletics, I'm pretty sure have been going pretty well. I'm a captain, orderly captain, still on the varsity volleyball team. And we're not doing that great, but I have a little surprise.
Item 14.2, the local accountability plan, 2015, 2016.
We continue to make revisions to the LCAP based on what the state requires and mandates. So this is definitely the last version and revision for this school year. And Jane is here, Jane has been leading the way in the area of the LCAP. So Jane, would you like to say a word, please?
Good evening. What we're finding with the LCAP is...
Just turn it on. Yeah, the battery will die if it stays on. It's just a switch on top.
I'm sorry, may I explain? This, yeah?
Yeah.
I can talk loudly.
Very good.
That worked out. So what we're finding with the LCAP throughout the state is that there is, as the state itself is kind of trying to figure out its parameters as to expectations for districts. Our signatories, who are our county offices of education, are asking for revisions constantly, is a good way to put it. And many LCAPs were returned back, in fact, in this county, as well as several counties, like the curriculum council. Thanks, Chris.
Curriculum council and the same, the same kind of thing. So we've worked closely, both Jen and myself, with Napa County Office of Ed to make sure that this version was up to their expectation. And some of the revisions were very slight, but they had to do with language, expenditure language. And it's becoming refined, I guess is the best way to say it. So that's really what this document is asking you to do. Go to, recommendations obviously to approve it with the specific recommendations that we took from Napa County Office of Education. Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
Off to your next challenge.
Uh, to my, to my next challenge, indeed.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, on that, I'm looking through that because it's obviously, you were given a template to start with in the LAM. And so one of the things is, it has different subgroups to identify. And you've taken the standard group, subgroups, but it requires you to identify all numerically significant people's subgroups. That's any group of 30 or more that outscored. So is there a possibility there are some subgroups that are missing? You may need to ask.
At this point, I don't think so. We've got students with disabilities, we've got language learners. We actually identified students who are foster students as well. The state provides us those parameters and they actually have us, they mandate actually that we address each one of those groups.
Yes, I saw that.
Yeah, yeah.
They list that, but they say, and any other group, 30 or more.
Yeah, yeah. So ours, I think I put in the others, the students with disabilities in many of those.
Okay, I'm just, that's a question for the future because I noticed too. My other comment on that, I think you're padding your resume. And under stakeholder engagement, the question is, how stakeholders, including parents, then engage and involve in developing, reviewing, and supporting implementation of the LCAP? I know, you know, I haven't had much time to look that up. But I know in one district, they have a parent review meeting that does this. And I don't feel the parents then participate in that. Your listing meetings, I've attended coffee conversation, this never came up. You've listed surveys, parent survey here. There's an elementary parent survey, create environment for learning at home. I have established a quiet place for homework. Yes, no, sometimes. Now, these kinds of surveys, that's not input to the LCAP. And there's nothing on this that says that, and yet you list that as evidence of parental involvement, stakeholder involvement. Could we actually have some stakeholder involvement that involves parents in the future?
Let me address those specifically. The coffee conversation came from an agenda that was submitted by the principal, that it was covered. Discussed some of the goals of LCAP. I don't know if you've gone to all of them, it may have been one you missed, I can't say. With regard to the parent advisory committees, those are fairly standard in a large district. But ELAC and/or site council are the usual parent forums for review of LCAP and LCAP goals in very small districts, you'll find. So there is a little bit of a difference there. Did I, was there another thing that I didn't address?
No, that's it.
So if it feels...
More involvement with stakeholders. And it doesn't seem that, I was unaware that anybody would solicit any input. I mean, it's been on their agenda here, but aside from that, I'm not aware of any solicitation of input.
Okay, and that's a, fair enough. And yeah, to, I, I did not intentionally pad anything to answer your first comment, to be candid with you. So, but I appreciate your comments.
Jane, I would also like to add that that's not just about the parent engagement as of this school year. It extends to the beginning that we've been developing the LCAP. This is the, this is not the first year of the LCAP. And I think you were there actually, Brian. We had workshops for the parents where different issues related to areas, components of the LCAP were discussed. This was at the elementary school, I was there in the library. We had parent groups participating. Did we get the turnout that we wanted and we hoped? No, we did not. But we have had those meetings. We have also gone to different groups in the community. We went to Rory and we presented to them in terms of the different priorities that they have now for the LCAP. Is everybody involved and engaged so far? Definitely not. So again, engagement is a two-way street. If we set up something, an event, the parents that show up participate, the parents don't, don't participate.
Yes.
Well, there are a, several parents now that are getting together to form a PTA at the Calistoga Elementary School. Will we be now included in those decisions or those conversations like the site council? Anything that, can the PTA now be included as well in decisions and things like that?
Well, it's not, yes, the LCAP goals can be discussed with parents. And, and the idea is not decision-making, but feedback providing, right? So absolutely, absolutely. Any other questions or comments on the LCAP? And it is in the process still, even at the state level, as it changes, being revised. Even, Brian, last year's template was actually different than this year's template. And that's very prescribed by the state. And what we're finding is that the local piece of the local accountability plan is getting narrower and narrower. Because what we're finding, and I know the superintendent can attest to this, is that the state is becoming much more specific about what you will put in there. And it's narrowing and narrowing. And this is year two. So while there is an attempt for sure to make sure that we do constantly get feedback on the plan, it's a living, breathing document. And we're anticipating that next year, the template and the parameters will be the same, but there's no knowing. In addition, every year, we are required, and I have done so for two years, provided our board, or last year, excuse me, and there will be another update provided, to the board in an open meeting. And I think last year's I provided you was in February, if I recall, February 10th board meeting, which is open to the public as well. And so the, the plan is discussed and updated at that meeting as well to provide the public another venue of input that is apart from a, a specific parent meeting.
Just what I'm saying, I know that, you know, it has had a lot of communication, unfortunately, that has caused some of us parents not to be at these meetings. I heard that some of the, you know, we were getting newsletters less and less. I was getting, we were getting information less and less, or I would get it right before. And so, you know, unfortunately, in those situations, it's sometimes been a mortal for us. And we can't be there. Now that you are our acting principal, can we work on sound that communication so as parents that want to be involved and want to be at these meetings know they're coming?
Sure, absolutely. Thanks for the feedback and the comments on it, both, both of you. Any other questions or comments on LCAP? Yes.
Well, we were supposed to have a site council meeting, but that was canceled.
I saw that on the first, I think it was, originally, yeah.
Earlier.
Earlier in the...
Last week. So at that site council meeting, would we have gone over the LCAP?
Usually, this is done a little bit later, in a year. It could be that that's gone over at site council, my first site council meeting. So that's absolutely fine. Yes. I, we're moving forward, we've had an excellent few days together, the staff and I. CES is going to be just fine. And we're working together and we're moving forward.
We know that you were trying to refine this document and going back and forth and doing all the revisions. It is a very painful process in some way. It's embarrassing. Thank you. Okay, for item 14.3, I'd like to introduce myself as a political interest. So I'd like to... This NOU basically is between the Calistoga Elementary School District and the Apple Valley Family Center. And it covers a lot of different areas. I'm not sure how many of you out there in the public know that the school district is actually funding licensed therapists four days a week for the elementary school. And two days a week at the junior senior high school. And I'm in the process that we can find a licensed therapist to add another day specifically for Calistoga High School students. So the 200,000, if not more, just for those five days at this point, we are able to provide, and I would say, it's venture to say, that there's very, very few school districts and schools that actually pay for licensed therapists to support our students and their families and their families. So this NOU is the work between the Apple Valley Family Center and other nonprofits in Napa County that bring those services to our families. In addition to that, this NOU also covers other, so that is basically the educational investment of health services that I'm speaking of. We also provide funding as a district, another partnership, to provide English as a second language classes as well as GED classes for adults in the community. Besides that, we have the Summer Bridges Program that some of you are familiar with. And we will continue to support, that's also a partnership between the Valley Family Center and the district. In addition to that, we have a community school program. And that is basically the new program. And I know if you're over here, and that is Andy, who is our community school's manager with full time. He's an employee of the Apple Valley Family Center. And we just contribute a fraction of his salary, basically. But he spends several days working with us at the junior senior high school in addition to also collaborating at the elementary school. So in terms of services to our families, I think we're very proud to be in the position to be able to provide the resources to have those programs. So this is a NOU and a request to the board to their support and...
Any comments from the public?
This is Aldea that you're talking about?
No, no, it's not Aldea. Aldea is another partner, and actually their NOU is also here. There is no pause to us for that. We provide the space, the building. But this is basically the, the family services of Napa Valley that provides the licensed therapist.
So getting the services for the licensed therapist is through the family center?
It is, the students are identified at the school. The students are identified to school. There's a core group that works and identifying, teachers make recommendations. And then those students are supported based on... Exactly, we have 14 meetings at both schools, the major school and the junior senior high school. With the administrators, the licensed therapists, the school council, or in the case of the junior senior high school, they get together and they talk about students who have been referred to the court immediately. And they determine what is the best placement for the student. So the same process happens at the elementary school. So we have, you know, Dr. Montra explained, we have three days, three to four days for licensing therapy programs. Actually, for, for the elementary, two days of the junior senior.
So this is something that is being put in an IP or is there something...
It's not part of the IP, this is a general, I mean, a specialization student can go ahead and participate. But it's mainly for the general student population.
Yes.
I was just wondering, the, the therapist, the licensed therapist that are at the school sites, are they spending, you say like so, four days? Are they spending four full days working with students? Or are they spending four days on the campus while students are identified? Is it just one-on-one time with the students?
Yes, they, these students, and sometimes they have, you know, had five to seven students that they need with in a daily basis. There was a need, a great need at the elementary school, especially for mental health services. At one point, there was a waiting list of about probably 10 to 15 students waiting for services. Now that, you know, that list is going down because of the availability of them by legal, you know, fully by legal without parents.
And what's the dollar amount again on the NOU?
For that program itself is 100,000.
100,000, yeah.
Just, I wanted to say something. Last week, because our counselor, Sherry Ross, knows the students really well and the students have been... and the students have been educated about this, students started letting us know that one of their peers was interested in committing suicide. With her skills and the skills of the therapist, we were able to recognize that this child was interested in having a suicide for our old parents who brought it. It was so invaluable to have that therapist here at our school to help that child and help those parents. It's very hard time as a parent to have a child who's old and sad when committing suicide. Not to have a person who's licensed and has the skills on our side. It would be very difficult. Because Shrek Ross has a lot of skills. He should have all the skills that a therapist has. So that would be a little bit important for us. And that child is now meeting with that therapist because the family can't afford, on the moment, to have those services applied. So it's almost like after they break the hospital for three days, after the kid, which is very drastic.
I just have a question. Is it the therapists that are connected with the AmeriCorps or is this a separate...?
No, those are separate programs.
That is a separate program. And who handles that role then?
Our... That's through the county office of education.
Okay. How do I get... Because I had a very poor experience with that counselor. So I just feel how to get a hold of your counselors. Because when I went to somebody who I thought would be the person, a person who would have someone's information, which was Greg at Boys and Girls Club, I feel he should be somebody that could kind of give me maybe some of that counseling advice or somebody I could talk to. And he ended up referring me to the AmeriCorps, who, the way that they handled it, completely killed the whole thing and trust between my daughter and just killed every plan that I ever wanted between, like, trying to fix our situation. And so I just... I don't know. Greg knows about that, but I was just wondering, how do I... Because I've never heard about the counseling at the... At the...
Well, you can do a referral to the school office. You can go to the... Jane Barton and, you know, ask her for it and then there will be the starting process. And we will look out to the family center and to the therapist. But yeah, you can submit a referral. We have referrals from before, from both schools. And you can, you know, parents can do it out, students can do it out for themselves or others. You know, from certain community members can do that. And then the whole community gets discussed and then a council will be assigned to the place.
Is there... Because I do work with the Boys and Girls Club, of letting them know some of this information and how to start that process because that is a group that parents feel, trust, they trust. And Greg is someone that parents, a lot of parents come to for advice like this. And not even being, stop being a parent, I trust them. And so I just, if they could have a little more information, they would...
Yeah, actually, Andy Munaga, our community school's manager, is going around the schools and meeting with the teachers and meeting with the different groups to introduce himself and talk about the referral process for mental health services.
It may have happened now. This is my experience happened last year. And so now I'm very...
But this year that we have a full time community speaker's manager, he is in charge of doing all of it, outreach and community hours in different schools.
I just want to say you guys are kind of, haven't been along the whole way. Correct me if I'm wrong, it's like we haven't, there was a transition where a mental health service was provided through the office of education and it's now transitioned to the school level. And so what, which is a good thing is we're able to provide so much more thorough...
We basically covered the program and have been doing this kind of NOU as a last school year. But we had less days, although now we're increasing the number of days.
So why you haven't heard as much about this? Because we've been transitioning to the campus level and we've been at that in a sense. So now we have a community service lead, so Andy, who's going around and educating everybody about the program now that it's in full, you know what I mean?
Well, yeah, no, I'm happy to know there's something else because the way that it was handled last year, it just, it broke my heart to know that I didn't have that service available because the way she handed my daughter a letter telling her that she has to show up for counseling on Monday without contacting me, without talking to me first. And my daughter felt like I signed her up for something that we never talked about. And that, that wasn't fair. And I wanted, I needed the support I needed as a parent. And so I'm glad to know that there's something else.
Yes, and anytime you have any questions, just stop by the office at the elementary school. You know, I'm there, the county sector. Or you, if you are a junior senior high school, Andy has two full days here and he can respond to any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I believe we got the NOU. All right. Then all those in favor? There's two more.
No, no, it's done.
Thank you, thank you. Item 14.44, Napa County Office of Education Memorandum of Understanding.
This memorandum of understanding is between the Napa County Office of Education and our district and that is to basically provide the college... Coach services. And she is here as Joanna Romo. We have her 80% of her time, so almost full-time. So she's an employee of the county, but our district is paying salary and we are very pleased that we just started a program that's brand-new. Actually, we began last spring. And can I add some more information as to what she's doing?
She has been fantastic. She's met with every single senior. Some of our families are new to the process of what happens after high school, what are the opportunities? And so she has started the process of setting up workshops with families. We're very fortunate that Ms. Romo is bi-legal. And she has actually reached out to an organization called... And I think it's happening now in the preschool. It's the Matino Family Literacy Club. And so we're going to start that at the high school. It's a six-week class where parents and students, and it's all about a growth of what's in the dream and introduces the parents to terminology that they need to know when applying for a college. Fast, all the students that we take to grant to a bit large, that are the average to have whose kids want to go to college. So they'll be introduced to through that literacy program. It'll be six weeks and they'll get a certificate and do a really neat thing. Unfortunately, we can only take, I guess, 25 parents first round and then we'll try to do more. She's flying up college field trips. I guess she should meet with the students. She should be involved, maybe a club advisor with the translators club. But the other thing that she's been doing is creating partnerships. We have these new CTE classes. And part of being a typical education program, a capital program, is to reach out to the community. So with our tiny house construction class, she's helping her teacher to find people beyond the vocational committee and then looking at ways that make kids go off to chat chat. We've been experiencing a little bit of this small house, but there's also another nice experience about working with children to chat chat and things like that. So she's really not just about college, but she's also about where you find opportunities. And then she's been visiting the classroom. One of the things that we partnership with the county is the program of the Obnuons. And it's an online program to give kids ideas of what's after their careers, services, what to do, resume, and other certification programs. So she's been visiting the classrooms and doing that long, like, costing 200 bucks. And so it's been a real positive. And what truly beat about her is that she is so open. She's, the door's open at lunchtime, it's absolutely forceful. Kids are in there, they pray, they smoke, they water, they call the person. I don't have an open house. I'm invited to see them. She's great with this. It's great with us.
Are there any questions, comments in public, comments?
We repeat out the NOU with that kind of situation.
All those in favor?
Aye.
14.5, point five, unlimited reservation, 1512. Every year, the school is required to... Offer a payment. Eventually, we're going to have to increase our locations. And so this area has to be...
Do we have any other appropriations?
All those in favor?
Aye.
14.5? Another item? I'm sorry, 14.44 now. I'm looking tired. Angela? Angela? You can do it.
Yes, so I just want to point out a couple, two points about... It's also 14.15, so in actual... The district, as you know, is to maintain 20% reserve. And this year due to the planned investments in our facilities in one hour. But I'm sorry, we can't hear you at all.
Hello, is that better? Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'll start over. So, as you know, the district maintains 20% reserve and... Sorry. And as a result of our many planned investments into our facilities, we ended the year with about a 17% reserve. And we're confident that, of course, we can get our reserve back to 20% and we intend to do so. On that note as well, on page 65, you'll see Fund 40, our facilities fund. This includes our COP, our local portion of the investment into our facilities and modernization. And it's separated by resources, that's where we track it. So I have other questions about... That's where COP is. And Fund 21 is on page 45. I'm sorry, making me go backwards. This is where we account for our GOV. And as you can see, there isn't zero any fund balance. We spent the rest of our GOV funds as planned on the landscaping project. Any questions?
There's just no question anymore, except the...
Yes.
Is there a roll to the right? All those in favor?
Aye. Any vote for...
Oh, this is, yeah. Sanwoko? Del Faspio?
Aye.
Faspio Bichet?
Aye.
Faspio Julian?
Aye.
Faspio Hunt?
Aye.
The student who ran for the... Item 14.0, the future agenda items. We have tentative November agenda items. That's the phase two final product.
Any other items? I'm sure we will be playing every month. So the routine items that come to you every year around the same time.
Thank you.
Did you plan the... The level of presentation on our academic website for the council? When is completely updated, yes, fully, or not yet?
Right, 14.0, the board cabinet. We're meeting again on Monday, November 2nd. Albert Cardone meeting is at 6:00 PM in this room. We start the board November 3rd at 5:00 PM on the pro station and then we go to the board meeting at 6:00 PM. So thank you for, you know, joining us to show up today. Hopefully, we'll see you in the next board meeting in November.
And that's the board meeting also that I'd like to have nature of facilities at Forte Park. So we can start at elementary school and then move to junior high school. Well, if we can, you know, if there is any parents who would like to take that tour with us and see all the improvements that have been happening, you know, the good things that have been happening in the schools. I mean, the district has spent a lot of money and we don't know the exact amount on top of my head, but we have, you know, worked really hard in this, you know, especially this last summer with the, you know, the transition of the elementary school. So I think that we're moving in the right direction in that area and job.
Events coming up. The end of November 9th, the end of the first trimester, CES. And then it's just incredible that all the holidays are coming our way. Also in December, we have the CSDA Annual Education Conference in San Diego. So we're looking forward to all those events coming up. There is no need to reconvene on station. So, are you...
Aye.
5:20, I move me, sure.
Thank you, I said.
All those in favor? Aye.
We're talking about trying to do something that... Again, on the sort of... If that means we're getting some... And I'm glad that we're... I bet you really...
Yeah, it was awesome. Ed was kind of... I remember that whole...